Today, we are joined by Council President Sean Hila Rivera. Thank you very much, Sean, for spending the next four hours. We just decided with us. No. Yeah, so let's start. We want a lot of issues to get into and a lot of us have a variety of questions. But why don't we start with kind of, you know, the politics of your new position? When did you first? Want to get the job and how did you kind of? Materialize it? It took me personally by surprise that day. I wasn't following it as closely as I might have in years past, but it was still a momentous day at City Hall.
Yeah. Well, first, thanks for having me on y'all and for y'all joining me. So the thing that really? Got me interested is the way that the independent budget analyst. Recruitment and hiring process. Was taking place. Super wonky, I know. But. When I worked at Mid-City Can. In City Heights. And then when I was the executive director at Youth Will. We thought the independent budget analyst was an incredibly important position for. Providing some clarity and understanding to the budget process and to the decisions of. And in context for the decisions that were being made with respect to the budget. And I don't think that we can overcome the problems that are facing San Diego. Or fulfill, you know, my vision for what ultimately I'd like to see city government provide to the people. If the people don't trust the decisions that are being made. And so. I just. I wanted to make sure that there was, there was an IBA hiring process in place that was going to. Maintain that trust in the position of the community, perhaps even grow it. And. It's spoken of a couple of times about. You know, hoping to see a bit more transparent and inclusive process. And wasn't necessarily seeing the progress in the way that I'd hoped on that front. And so. Yeah, that was really the cattle, the catalyst for, for, you know, wanting to do it and. The, you know, on the day of the vote, the enough of my colleagues, you know, trusted me to steer the ship. To, you know, to put me in this position now. And now it's my job to not just make good on that, on that process with respect to the independent budget analyst, but to, you know, ensure that the institution as a whole is being run well. That we are, you know, striving to provide the highest level of governance, to be collaborative and the strong counsel that I think our city deserves.
Was the council not being collaborative and inclusive and on the right track under your predecessor?
I think. There, first of all, I think it just should be like noted that last year and the past two years have been incredibly challenging to run any institution. I don't need to share this with you, I'm sure, Matt. You know. From just the technical aspects of shifting council online to the numerous tangible and intangible challenges that have been presented as a result of COVID-19. It's been a really, really high degree of difficulty. And I want to appreciate how conscious of that council president, former council president Campbell was. Her emphasis on making sure that people were healthy and safe, I think was super important. And so I wasn't like a disgruntled council member for the past year. That certainly was not the case. I do think that there are measures that we can take to be even stronger as a body, to be, you know, even more inclusive. And I, as I've mentioned to some others, I. I probably have a heavy bias toward really, really being transparent with, with the members of the community and the groups to work with members of the community who've been traditionally shut out of the process. And so, and that's as a result of my previous work in the nonprofit world, the world, the work that I did when I was at the, the City Heights Law Project while I was in law school. All of that showed me, all those experience, experiences left me with the impression that there was, that a lot more could be done proactively to ensure. That folks understand. Decisions are being made. How they can engage in that process and then why these decisions that are being made are, are being made in the way that they are. And I do think that I have a unique background in working with those groups. In addition to the experience that I have serving on nonprofit boards and being, serving in executive capacities as well. So I, I, I think I'm up to this, this task and I'm really excited about, about, you know, fulfilling the responsibilities that come with being council president. While also, you know, I cannot and we cannot as a district nine team for a second lose sight of our responsibilities to represent District Nine. First and foremost, that's, that's what I was elected by the people. And then there's this additional responsibility now that my colleagues have entrusted me with of making sure that the body, that the council is an institution is being run to its fullest capacity.
You, you, how do you balance that? And how, and why don't you use this opportunity to share your vision with us? You mentioned you have a vision earlier. Obviously, this is your first term, so you relatively new at City Hall, but. We're well aware of your background in nonprofits and then the legal background you bring to, to the position. How, how do you imagine envision running the ship?
Yeah, so I mean. Again, you quickly mentioned the balance and I think it's, you know, we immediately after. The vote with, with. For our council president, our team, our District Nine team convened and like kind of. Told each other, we're not going to lose sight of the folks that we represent. We are acutely aware of the challenges facing our constituents and that has to maintain as our priority. There is additional staff support that comes. With running, with serving as council president and we will utilize to ensure that that balance is being maintained. So I want to start with that part. So in terms of vision for the council, I want, you know, so often the council, or the form of government that we have is solely referred to as a strong mayor form of government and, and no doubt is a strong mayor form of government, but it's also a strong council form of government, strong mayor, strong council. And I want to see the council. Maximize its potential as a policymaking body. I, and I think that we can, we are, we are stronger. This is, it's going to sound cliche, but it is very, very. Very, very true because of the form of government that we have, that our power is greater as a whole as the council. So tapping into our collective power is super, super important to me. And so when I say being stronger and being more collaborative, those two things go hand in hand with, to me. We will create better policy. By encouraging folks to be more collaborative for allowing the committee process and encouraging the committee process to be utilized to the fullest extent possible. I am looking forward to small, but I think important changes in terms of allowing for a bit more discussion with respect to amendments. So that when policies have made their way through committee and make their way to council, there's still opportunity for vigorous debate. There's nine, you know, nine folks on this council have been, again, entrusted by the constituents of their districts to make the best decisions, not just for their districts, but for the city as a whole. And I want to see us exercise those muscles. I think that we've got a lot of smart, capable folks on the council who come from a variety of perspectives. And, you know, that, that small change of allowing a bit more debate when it comes to amendments, I think can allow for some of those perspectives to strengthen the policies that are ultimately passed. So rather than a policy that is going to, you know, impact the, not just the 1.4 million people who live in the city of San Diego, but everyone who does business with us and that, you know, we have a regional impact that spreads beyond the borders of our city. So that it's not just simple up and down votes on, you know, policies of significant consequence, that there's rigorous debate that's occurring. That's very important to me. And that we're just simply, you know, sticking to the best practices with respect to, you know, strong governance, that we are, you know, making sure that we are fully vetting things before they come to council. I think again that utilizing the committee process is important for that. And then doing our best to communicate with the public so that folks understand, again, not just what decisions are being made, when they're being made, how they can engage in that process. And that we are, whenever possible, removing barriers to.
Matt, do you mind if I just ask a question on that, on that front about the vision?
Of course.
Your meeting, but, but, you know, Sean, I mean, for most of the strong mayor era, it's been an oppositional thing where the council president was a Democrat and the mayor was a Republican. And other than a couple of months with Philner and then last year with Jen, really haven't had the council president be the same party as the mayor. Seems like that changes things, maybe not, I don't know, what are your thoughts about? It's not oppositional anymore, but you don't want to be Todd's little lieutenant either. I mean, I don't know, what are your thoughts on that, that idea?
Yeah, it's funny that you asked that, David, because I think when I say strong council and people are like, oh, like is the council, you know, council going to, you know, revolt? No, it's not about that, right? So I think it really is about exercising the power that we have been, you know, granted by the people. Which, you know, largely involves our. Decisions with respect to the budget and, you know, the policymaking opportunities that we have. And I think that. We saw over the past year that there's a considerable amount of alignment between the council and the mayor, certainly with respect to values. I mean, this is why. I think things ran relatively smoothly last year. But there's always going to be, you know, certain nuances and, and, you know, differences in the exact ways to execute some of, some of the, the routes to fulfilling. To, you know, making sure that our values are brought to light, right? So I don't see it being a point of tension too often, but I think that there is something to be said for the healthy tension between, you know, co-equal branches of government. We have an executive branch and we have, you know, essentially a legislative branch with the council. And we, each, each of us in those respective capacities have a responsibility to the residents of San Diego to fulfill those duties regardless of party. And that doesn't necessarily have to mean confrontation, but it should mean like the healthy tension that exists when two individuals, let alone, you know, 10 elected officials are debating the best way to achieve, you know, outcomes on really, really important issues.
Let me, one of the things you brought up when you were talking about your vision was more fully vetting issues at, at city council, maybe doing it in real time. I think many San Diegans like me will be glad to hear that because it feels like city halls, almost like the gang who couldn't shoot straight in recent years with one-on-one Ash. With Sports Arena now, you know, multiple strikes against that project getting off the ground. What reassurances do you offer San Diegans with your leadership that we won't be walking into some other project that isn't fully vetted, that is going to come back and, you know, bite us all?
Yeah, you know.
As taxpayers.
Now, I wish I could say that we won't. I, first of all, I think part of it is being honest and saying, I can't promise that, right? Because we, we won't always know that things are going to work out the way that we hope. But what we can and really must adhere to is, you know, a promise to do our due diligence, right? And I think that what I, what I, what I saw from the outside. Prior to being elected and. Have been heartened to see, you know, some, some changes in over the past year. And I think that we can always do better is doing away with a cultural. Something that seems to, you know, be, be part of the culture of San Diego's political establishment. That fails to differentiate when someone is looking to simply do due diligence and thoroughly vet something versus trying to be an impediment to progress. Those aren't the same things and oftentimes they are treated as such and that's a problem. And we have to get, we have to get past that. And so I am always willing to push back on that narrative that simply because one of my colleagues is asking a bunch of tough questions and isn't there yet simply means that they're not on board with making San Diego a better place, allowing it to move forward to become a world-class city. There are undoubtedly folks who would like to see us, you know, turn back the clock and freeze time. But I don't think that, I don't, I have yet to see that any of my colleagues are those sort of people. But they are interested in making sure that we understand what we're getting ourselves into, that we are asking, you know, the questions need to be asked. And so I think the commitment from me. Is to be an advocate for those who, who want to vet things thoroughly and do due diligence and to push back on the simple, the simple and I think really damaging assumption that simply because someone is asking a lot of questions about a potentially popular project or idea means that they are opposed to it or opposed to progress, progress more generally. Cause that is, that's not the same thing. And it, it creates a culture, Matt, where it's, I think it's rewarded those who've gone along to get along and has made it very, very challenging for those who, again, aren't even necessarily opposed to the final outcome that's being sought, but just want to be more sure before they step into it.
And then, then let me ask you this question and then I'll pass the mic to my colleagues here. Before you became council president, you were kind of zeroing in on a couple of issues, it seemed to me, at least in the media, right? You spoke to my friend Connor Doherty about ADUs and housing. And then more recently about the people's ordinance and trash fees and trash pickup. Two huge issues that may take years, so beyond your one term. Not, not, not presupposing that you don't get a second, but before your one year to resolve. So, so what issues are you going to focus on as council president? And how will you use the control of the agenda to advance them?
Yeah. So. The priorities that I established in my first year as a council member will continue to be my priorities as a, as a council member. And we've added some, you know, as the world evolves, we need to, to, you know, adapt and move with it. But I do want to draw a little bit of a distinction between the, my priorities as a council member and priorities as council president. I wasn't selected by my colleagues to advance my agenda. I was selected to steer the council and I am very committed to doing that. And so I'm committed to waiting to see what the priorities. That are put forward by my council colleagues are, they're going to, each committee sets priorities in, 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 in their own process as well. And that should shape what the, the agenda is and the priorities are for the council as a whole. And I am really committed to doing that. To, to, you know, stick, stay true to that. I don't think, I didn't, I didn't pitch any, you know, policy agenda. When I was. You know, on, right, right before the, the council president vote. I don't think that that would have been a compelling argument to me if someone had made it. And I, I don't, I don't think that that's. Ultimately, what I've been tasked to do as council president. It's, it's to guide the body and I can't do that until we take the time to do due diligence and let that, that priority-making process play itself out.
How do you get those priorities? Do you guys go on, I mean, it's COVID, so you're not going to go on a retreat and, you know, over, over beers or a fireplace, figure it all out? How do you?
No, Brown Act tells us we can't do that either, right? So, yeah, we don't, don't want Jeff McDonald. We don't want to rile him up. No, so we, you know, the, each committee solicits, puts a, the chair of each committee puts a memo out requesting the priorities of the different members of each committee. And then in the, typically the first meeting of the year, they, they help kind of set the agenda for the year and a work plan is established. So each committee will establish a work plan. We've done that with the rules committee. We've issued that call memo, waiting to hear back from folks. Once those, those work plans are established by the various committees, then as council president, we can step back and look at and see what it looks like are, you know, each of the committees wants to prioritize. The council members want to prioritize, will also have budget priority memos. And that will give us a lot of, a lot of information to work with about, you know, the goal, the goals of the council as a body. So, you know, as a council office, housing and homelessness remain, you know, top of the mind, huge, huge issues for us. Climate, you know, making sure that we're doing what we need to do with respect to climate. We've got a cap update, we have to fund that cap, those are huge priorities to us as well. And then, you know, obviously you mentioned some of these, you know, some of the other more, more specific issues like the people's ordinance, like, you know, ADUs. But those, those are, you know, kind of, in my mind, those are, those are tactical. Actions that the city needs to take in order to achieve longer and bigger goals with respect to, you know, solving our, our housing deficit, addressing zero waste goals and addressing some of the structural budget issues that have affected the city.
On housing, it's been six years since Jerry Brown said this is the most urgent problem facing California and it feels like we've made relatively little progress on it. I know we've passed all these state laws and I know the ADUs are coming and I know the zoning change is coming. But do you think it's ever going to happen? There's been a story recently about in San Diego or in beside LA orange at San Bernardino County, more than half the homes purchased in recent months have been by speculators. It seems to me like that, that, that is complicating this hugely by just inflating the market for housing. Is there anything you guys can do about it?
Yeah, Chris, I, you know, I've been reading your, your pieces on this. You don't seem optimistic and I don't necessarily blame you. I think the concern out of speculators is a real one and it's, it's a concern that's expressed from. You know, folks who are concerned about what's going to be built. In their neighborhoods and, you know, tenants' rights activists. It's also a really, really challenging one. The United States, you know, the system that we have has a huge deference to property rights. It makes it somewhat difficult. To, to address issues like speculation in the housing market, but that can't be the end of the conversation. We have to figure out some ways to get ahead of that. And so. I don't have the silver bullet, Chris, but I will tell you that it's super, super important to us. I, I had significant, significant concerns last year. When the previous portfolio was purchased, you know, by a private equity firm. That's thousands of homes in, at one time being swooped up by, by, you know, a pretty sterile corporate entity that has very little to no connection to the community should concern everyone. And, and, you know, one for the upward pressures that it applies on, in terms of cost, but two, just because housing is, is a, I believe it's a human right. It's something that has such a huge impact on every aspect of people's lives. And we, so I think as a body and as a city as a whole, we're going to need to do some really creative work to figure out ways to address that speculation issue without being a huge impediment to development. Cause as you know, Chris, and you've talked about a lot, regulation can be a big impediment on that front. So how do we balance that, right? How do we balance the, 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 the very, very real concerns that so many of us have about speculators swooping? You know, not just multifamily. Units, but now on a more and more common basis, single-family homes as well. With the need to make sure that there's streamlined processes that allow for housing to be built quickly and cost-effectively.
Recently, San Francisco Mayor London Breed kind of had a, a public outburst, unlike really any from, we've seen from a Democratic mayor in California where she expressed just gigantic impatience with homelessness and with the city's lack of progress in it. Do you worry that San Diego could come to a point where it abandoned its constructive approach and just says, hell no, we can't live with this?
Yeah, that's, that's a huge concern. And it's an issue that we've run up against in, in our district. So obviously, you know, downtown San Diego is the epicenter of the homelessness crisis, but it's certainly not exclusive to downtown San Diego. We know our coastal communities are impacted by it and multiple neighborhoods in District Nine are as well. And yes, patience grows, grows thin. Sometimes it's a, when we hear from folks, it's a lack of understanding about some of the complexity of the issue. And other times it's because, you know, they feel like their own lives or property are at risk. You know, what does that mean? A canyon fire that could, can, can light up in an encampment. Or just the really, really. Troubling sight that we have to wrestle with sometimes of seeing folks who are not okay, living in conditions that none of us should be okay with our neighbors living it. So, yeah, when we hear from constituents, sometimes there's, there's a visceral anger that we hear in their voice that concerns me. But we also know that there are best practices. When it comes to getting folks off the street permanently. And I'm committed to, you know, seeing San Diego, you know, stay true to those. And as I've drawn the distinction before, that also means. Having honest conversations with some of the advocates for the unsheltered community. That having compassion for them means also seeing the, the, and they oftentimes make, make the case that we can't paint the, the unsheltered community with a broad brush. And that applies in both directions. That also means that there's, I've seen and heard of folks who are preying upon our unsheltered community to, you know, to peddle drugs, to, to take advantage of people who are struggling with substance abuse or mental health issues. And, and as someone who's seen family members struggle with those issues. I have little patience or tolerance for that. And I think that it's entirely appropriate to crack down on those who are preying upon quite literally the most vulnerable in our society.
Sean, right now across the country, the temperature and the flavor of anger and disrespect is probably at an all-time high. And we've seen some really crazy disruptions at some of the public meetings across the country. I know with COVID forcing a lot of things back online, this might not be an issue right this very minute, but has there been discussion about any changes in the way city council meetings are held? For the future, just to deal with some of these issues?
We have not gotten in that yet, but we've obviously seen it, Laura. We, we've seen what our, our colleagues at the Board of Supervisors have seen, have had to deal with face-to-face. And we've heard some of it in our own meetings. And I think. We've tried to find a balance of respecting First Amendment rights. With also, also, also pushing back on some of the misinformation and disinformation that we've heard. I will tell you, I have. Little to no patience for comparisons between some of the decisions that have been made with respect to COVID regulations and, and Nazism. As someone with Jewish heritage, you know, I think it's deeply inappropriate and counterproductive to make comparisons like that. We heard similar comparisons made to, you know, to Jim Crow, the Jim Crow era and that's troubling. And, you know, we, this is a tough time, Laura, it's a tough time for democracy. We're seeing that in a, in a number of different ways. So, you know, balancing first protection rights with our First Amendment protections, which are sacred in our country with. Proactive efforts to undermine little democracy. With proactive efforts to spread disinformation, with intentional decisions to make it way too easy to spread misinformation. And political actors who are seeing it in their own personal interest to amplify those efforts and to juice them for, you know, for their own gain. This is, it's a tough time for democracy and we're going to have to really, really work together as elected officials. You all obviously have a responsibility as well in the role that you play in the media to ensure that we're, we're walking that line between, you know, making sure that people can express their opinions, but without doing so in such a way that we burn the whole house down with respect to democracy.
Do you have plans to change the council meeting approach or how is that going to look under your, under your presidency?
Well, I do want to get us back in person as quickly as possible. We'd hope to be able to do that next week, obviously with, with what's going on right now. It would, it would be irresponsible and quite honestly, I'm not sure the staff capacity would be there for us to meet in person. So as soon as, as soon as it's safe to be in person again, we are ready to do that. I think that's step one. And then we'll look to, you know, being able to bring the public in in a safe way. Um, and then we'll look to, you know, being able to bring the public in a safe way. And I don't think it's for me to decide alone about how we wanna set rules for, for decorum and, and behavior. I have, again, I'm, I'm, I think the First Amendment is really, really important. We need to make sure we protect. The rights of folks to express their opinions, to disagree with us, to disagree with us vehemently. But also to make sure that we can maintain order in such a way that allows people's business to be done. Um, and, and there's, there's a, there's a thin line, but there is a line certainly between those two things. And as a body, I think we need to make that decision um so that ultimately we can accomplish what we've been sent to, to, to do, which is. You know, get work done, not just, you know, simply hold uh venting sessions. And I think, you know, Supervisor Fletcher has, has, has named this and I think others have as well. There is certainly what appears to be a game of one, one upmanship being played by some of those who are being, you know. Um, who are stepping to the mic and figuring out, you know, how they can go viral. I was really, you know, I was flipping through CNN a couple of days ago and I'm, I'm seeing one of the folks who was. Um, who really um made a show of himself at a Board of Supervisor meeting. I mean, that's not what San Diego wants to be known for. Um, so, you know, we're gonna have to figure that out, but again, that's, that's, that's not for me to decide alone.
Do you think that putting uh, putting these people in these comments on the internet is uh. Something you could avoid doing? Would you, would you lean towards not doing that anymore? In, so that they don't end up on CNN and they don't end up putting their videos up on the internet for everybody to, to look at? Because that does seem like kind of the Jerry Springer-esque, Springerizing of council meetings.
Um, yeah, but you, you know, Andrew, I, I think you're, you're right that that is a huge part of it. And I, I, as like, I'm just processing that it right now in real time. It sounds difficult for us to, to play a deciding role in what gets, what, what can and can't be recorded and disseminated. We get into some real blurry territory real quickly from a, you know, First Amendment um perspective. When we start doing that, so we can, there, there is a, there is a place that's entirely appropriate for a body of government to have. Rules in place for, you know, how folks conduct themselves and, and what will be tolerated in terms of behavior. Um, without, you know, censoring types of speech. Um, and, and I think that that's probably where we're gonna need to lean into. But, but what you just said is part of why this is so hard. Um, and so, you know, we have a limited role that we can play in government. Media has another, I mean, there's, there's different kind of checks and balances in its own way. And um who decides what's going to be disse- disseminated and amplified in what ways? Uh, certainly it's going to play a role in, you know, how viral someone thinks that they can go. By grabbing, you know, by grabbing the, the podium and, and saying, you know, really, really awful. Um, and some, you know, inaccurate things.
I'll ask a couple of questions about uh the, the things we get the most letters on, for example. Uh, one is uh, street vendors. Get a lot of letters on people complaining about street vendors on the parks, in the beaches. I'm wondering when that will actually come up to uh discussion. Uh, and of course, the other bigger ish, issue that we've already talked about a little bit is uh land use. With that question, I'm wondering. How long will it take to assess whether what the plans we've set in motion are working or they're working against? What our intent was. If our intent was to build affordable housing and what's happening is we're building lots of unaffordable housing. At what point will we turn the ship and say, let's try something different?
Yeah, um, so the first question, Andrew, with respect to uh street vending. Uh, we know it's an issue of considerable interest to the community. Um, so we, it was, it was meant, it was, it was set to be docketed uh the week after we took over as council president. Uh, there wasn't a draft ready. I didn't think it was, I thought this is too important of an issue to put on the docket without their, without having seen it, a draft. And without having a, a chance um to have uh not just the, the full council, but the public um vet that draft. Um, you know, we talked earlier about, you know, properly vetting things. So I know that there's urgency to get something done. Um, completely understand that. Also, this needs to be done right. It's going to impact a lot of people in a variety of ways. So uh we, we uh. Are, are encouraging it to go to committee, I believe. Um, they are, there, there is work uh to complete the draft of that. And, you know, we don't intend to delay it in any way. We wanted to go through the committee process and intend to. Let, allow it to come to full council for a vote once it's done that. Um, we just wanna make sure this is done right. Um, this doesn't feel like something that should have been, you know, should be done last minute like a, uh, you know, homework assignment. That's um, you know, due at the end of the semester. With respect to, to development, um. We put forward a number of recommendations to the mayor with respect to analyzing the current ADU policy. And one of those um had to do with increasing the requirement for affordability for accessory, accessory dwelling units. Um, the mayor's office responded with a memo uh in, in kind and uh that particular issue. With respect to affordability of accessory dwelling units is going to be uh analyzed. Um, we think that there is room to increase affordability without impacting um uh the production. And um that, that's based on some of the conversations we've had with some of the builders of those homes. But I also understand, given where we are and what Chris has noted with respect to overall production, that we need to be careful about not. Um, pulling the brake too quickly or uh grabbing the steering wheel and, and over correcting in such a way that. Has a negative impact on, on, on production. More broadly beyond accessory dwelling units, we have to um, you know, figure out ways to make it easier, to make housing more affordability. Um, something that Chris and I have agreed on in the past and I continue to be a strong proponent of is making it easier. To use uh prefab and modular housing to get um, you know, what seems to be pretty high quality housing um built quickly. Um, and, and, and I, I'd like to see us move forward on, on that. Um, and we're, we're, we're just, we're going to have to, to use a number of levers to increase affordability. Um, and we also know that this. Um, it's a problem that com- compounds itself, right? So, you know, the more limited um production is generally um, the, the higher that, that folks can charge for, for, for. The more that folks can charge for housing. So anyways, without going too far down that rabbit hole and spinning around in circles too much, Andrew. I would just say that um we are deeply, deeply committed to it. We also have to preserve the, the, you know, the, the little bit of affordable housing that remains in San Diego. The Barrio Logan Community Plan Update that was approved um just before the legislative recess, I think was a really, really important step. In that direction, huge environmental justice um implications for the Barrio Logan community. But kind of deeper into the weeds in that, in that policy. Um, was some of the work that was done to try to avoid displacement, which was a huge issue in San Diego as well. So I think we're actually making some progress on that front. It's not fast enough. It's not good enough. Um, we've got some tools that seem to be working. We need to add more. And um I am super, super committed to that as a council member uh to, to getting that done. And as council president, would certainly encourage my colleagues to bring uh, to, to bring this, to step forward that will move us in that direction.
Um, so I was reading the interview that you did as a San Diego last month and. Mentioned among your priorities, um, improving infrastructure and just, um, you know, addressing problems in parks and libraries and. These, these things, these things that have been issues in San Diego for a really, really long time, but are generally been hard to power. Because it just gets pushed to the wayside when more important budget issues come up. So how do you plan to make these a priority and kind of tied on addressing some of these really longstanding issues?
Yeah, thanks Bella. Uh, I, I think part of it is, is there's a structural budget. Problem that I know that you, the UT has noted, the Voice of San Diego has noted. Basically, anyone who can do arithmetic and has looked at the city budget has noticed that. We simply don't have enough coming in to account for what needs to get done. What needs to get done, and I should also add, what San Diegans continuously say they want to have done as well. So we have to acknowledge that. We can't simply pretend that um, you know, President Biden. Um, or, you know, a robust state budget is going to fix this for us. But structural budgets uh problems are not solved through um, you know, one-off uh infrastructure bills at the federal level. Or, you know, really good budget years at the state level. Uh, we have to, we have to, to, to make some of those corrections. And we know that on a per capita basis in the city of San Diego. Um, we just are simply not bringing enough, enough, bringing in enough revenue to account for some of these longstanding needs. This is really frustrating for someone who just stepped into office, right? Because it means that, that making up that ground seems like a drastic step. We, we think about some of the, the wastewater and uh wastewater fees that were updated over the past year. And when, when fees are not updated for thirty plus years for, for certain i- industries or certain businesses. The correction that needs to be made seems like it is radical. But in reality, we're just catching up and doing the work that should have been done uh year by year, right? So Bella, I think this, part of this is, is a, is a conversation that I try to have with my constituents as often as possible. It's an honest, I, I try to make it an honest one, right? I say exactly what I just said to you, which is, look, we're not bringing in enough to pay for what needs to get done. Um, constituents are continuously frustrated, not but just by the state of, of infrastructure. But by seeing it, it, which, which seems to be a game at sometimes where they will see the project that they wanna have done prioritized. And then it will not get done because an inevitable emergency occurs, something breaks. The funding that was set aside for that priority that had been listed is no longer there because the emergency had to be dealt with. That is no way to run a city. And so we, we, we have to over time, you know, start to, to address some of these, these revenue shortfalls. Um, in such a way that we can finally catch up and we're, we're, we're billions of dollars behind when it comes to our infrastructure. Um, so we need to have that honest conversation. And Bella, I, I can't, you know, speak about this issue without connecting it to what Matt asked about. You know, toward the beginning of this conversation, right? Which is. Why should San Diegans trust us? This is, and this is why the stakes are so high, especially in the city of San Diego right now. Why should the residents of San Diego trust us with more money when we continuously make bad decisions? And, 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 and bad deals. Take two steps forward and three steps back. We can't do that anymore. Um, because, you know, at a certain point in time, folks who want to trust us, wanna believe in us. Wanna believe the government can actually do things. Throw up their hands and say, you, you know, what's the point? Uh, and, and so, um, I hope that, I, I, I think and I hope. That um those of us who are in elected office in the city of San Diego right now, understand those stakes. Um, we'll have the hard conversations that need to be had and then we'll um. We'll get the job done once the, the trust is, is, is um, is provided uh to us to, you know. Give us the, the funding that we need to do the work that needs to be done.
State law allows cities to impose income taxes, but San Francisco is the only city in California with an income tax of one point five percent, which draws in a tremendous amount of revenue. Uh, is that something that you would ever contemplate or is the trust issue too big and the backlash too possible?
Um, ever contemplate, I think is, that's a very long time. Um, so I, I think before an income tax, Chris, there's uh like a lot of things that we just. We need to kind of just get into a um. Before we start, like, uh, I guess being a, at the forefront of, of types of revenue that are brought in, brought in. I'd say that San Diego should kind of like at least get to the middle of the pack, right? We have like one thing that stares us right in the face and, and Drew, I, I think briefly might have mentioned or, or, or might, might have met. Uh, the, the people's ordinance. Look, that's a great example, right? We've got this, this ordinance on the books that makes San Diego a complete outlier with respect to, to trash collection. We are the only city in the county of San Diego doesn't charge a fee for that trash collection. We're the only big city in the state doesn't charge a fee. So before we get to income tax, why don't we look at the things that we're not doing that everyone else is doing? Um, so that we can get our, you know, our revenue right.
Uh, what, how about the sports arena site? Obviously, that's. I was gonna say in the news again, but it feels like it's been in the news for months and months for the wrong reasons. But are you gonna let the mayor's office figure that out and, 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 and take the lead on that? Or what is, what role do you see for your, for yourself and for the council uh as, as they try to figure that whole, whole mess out?
Yeah, I, I think this is gonna require a partnership from all three branches of city government. Uh, the city attorney's office, the mayor's office and council. Um, I think that the mayor's decision to kind of move forward on a dual track makes a lot of sense. We should consider to, uh, continue to explore, um, you know, our, our legal options. Um, with respect to the, to, you know, uh, using the full legal process uh and appealing the decision. That was re- recently made and we can't just sit back and, and hope that that plays out in the way that, you know, that we hope. Um, we need to, to start to take uh actions to, to, you know, do the environmental impact report. Um, that might be necessary. I, yeah, dual track approach um isn't just a good sign for how we're going to approach the sports arena site now. I think it's a good sign of just the improvement in, in governance generally right now in the city. Um, I think it's, it's, it was a prudent um and aggressive thing to do at the same time and I appreciate that. Uh, this, with respect to the, the sports arena site generally. I know that I said it and a couple of my colleagues said it and I think I've heard the mayor say it as well. That is a generational opportunity for San Diego. Um, to one, um, have a substantial amount of, of, of housing built. For that housing to be affordable to San Diegans and, you know, to make sure that there's a, an arena that, you know. Can be a job creator, a, a revenue producer and, you know, fulfill a lot of other important needs uh for our community. We, we can't get it wrong. It is incredibly frustrating that we've figured out multiple ways to screw it up already.
I think we've heard we can't get it wrong before from the folks who've got it wrong multiple times.
Um, yeah, you're, you're probably right. I'm sure they did say that. Um, some of, some of that, to be quite honest, that is um. Perplexing to me as well. Wh- why, like how some of those mistakes were made and I think just kind of generally. It seems to be consistent with what had been a desire to prioritize. Being able to make the, the grand announcement and do the press conferences quickly as possible, rather than make sure, you know, the thing was done right. And, and that's, we just, that's what we cannot do, right? And we, and that, the, the commitment that I made to you and, and, and all San Diegans earlier. To ensure that there is space to push back and say, hold on, wait a second. Before, you know, I, I know that you had a press conference scheduled for next week. That's not most important thing right now. The most important thing is getting this generational decision right. Um, we wanna make sure there's space for that pushback, space for that conversation and that, um, you know, we just. I'm sure, I'm sure it was said before Matt, but we just can't keep screwing these things up.
Yeah, we keep speaking about uh trust issues with the city. It seems like the measure C issue is, is yet though another example uh where the voters weighed in. The message was sent and then the voters were told, oh no, you guys got that wrong. We're gonna go ahead and do it anyway. I mean, that's the impression that a lot of our letter writers are getting. So you can, can you speak to that effort?
Yeah, well, you know, my vote was, I, I voted against us declaring that it had passed. Um, that's, and I'm supportive of the expansion. And, and I think that there's, there is space for both opinions to be held at the same time. Um, I, based on the rulings that I'd read, I didn't think that the city of San Diego needed to take a position that it had passed. Um, in order for us to be successful, for, for it to, to be deemed in court as a successful ballot initiative. Um, so you, and, and it, the reason I held that position, Andrew, is for the exact reason you just said. Um, the ballot said what it said, the city of San Diego put that ballot language in front of the voters. And it seemed, i- in my opinion, um, not ideal for, for us then to, to take a position. Uh, that seemed to contradict that, even if the law will ultimately be on our side. Um, and so, um, I, I think at this point, it's pretty clear which way the law is pointing with respect to what the threshold is. For citizen ballot initiatives. Um, I thought it was pretty clear actually even before. Um, I just didn't want us to be inconsistent. So I think that that's going to be a really important um. Uh, way for San Diego to move forward both with respect to revenue. And for ensuring that we have a twenty-first century convention center worthy of, of the city that, that we wanna live in. Um, I just wanna make sure that we take those steps forward in a way that the city, that the residents of the city don't feel like we're playing uh. And games with them in order to achieve the objectives that we want.
What is the next steps for the convention center project? There's obviously the news just out of um court on the whole two thirds, simple majority issue. It seems to be working in convention center expansionists favor.
Yes, I mean, I think for the city of San Diego, as far as I understand, it's to let the court process play out and and once, once it does that, then we'll move forward accordingly.
Keep our fingers crossed, I guess, is the short version.
Yeah, depending on which side you're on. Yeah.
Um, does that mean you're on, you're you're on the a side that doesn't want to keep their fingers crossed?
It well, so again, I actually, I favored, I I I supported the expansion. Um, I just didn't like the 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 way that we were going about doing it.
Yeah, understood. Um, I want to bring you back to the cap uh for for a moment. What what do you expect to happen this year and how will you ensure that that is not only um legally binding and kind of gets gets the job done, but that really gets the job done. I mean, much was made in our editorial pages and elsewhere about, you know, the percentages of folks who would be biking in in hubs across San Diego, and we're not even close to those. That's just one example of a of a of a of a of a number that won't be met, rolling up into a larger number that needs to be met if it's legally binding.
Yep. Um, well, I think the cap is a really good example of a of what I was mentioning earlier, which I think was the previous administration's interest in 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 flashy media success over, um, you know, substantive impact. And so the cap was passed, was a big deal. Uh, we had a Republican mayor and Democratic council. We got the cap passed. And there was a bunch of um a celebration about that and it and with good reason at the mo- in the moment. And then we never funded the cap like it needed to be in order to actually execute it, right? So a huge priority of of mine, again, is wearing the council member hat this year, is going to ensure that we we properly fund um the the cap that is passed. We can't pass a cap, say that it's important to us and then not invest in it. So if we're going to pass it, we gotta put our money where our mouth is. That means investing investing um in accordance with the cap and, you know, continuing to pull the policy levers necessary in order to achieve that as well. We know that we don't um change um promote share simply by, you know, by building bike lanes and increasing the number of people riding public transportation. We also, we we do that by making it easier for folks to live in places where they can walk, bike uh and and take transit to work. And I think that we are taking a lot of steps on that front. So it's something as complex as climate change and the and and San Diego's contribution to it isn't um going to be uh uh achieved successfully by pulling one single lever. We're gonna need to invest. We're gonna need to make, continue to make policy changes that move us in the direction of of hitting the goals that we set. Just real and real quick, Matt, I'm gonna switch back to my computer now because now the iPad's getting low, uh, but I should be able to do that seamlessly without losing you all.
Okay, I appreciate your tech savvy.
And I can, we can keep going.
Yeah, as you're doing that, I just another follow-up question uh occurred to me when we were talking about infrastructure. I was just reexamining or looking through the Union Tribune's best photos of the year, which are amazing. For anyone who's watching this, please check that out. Shameless plug. There's a photo of the flooding on the I five that is I've seen that photo a hundred times. It's a an amazing photo. You know what I mean? Impassable freeway because of water. So I guess my question to you is, you know, there's this kind of short window where the federal government is basically throwing money at governments to help with their infrastructure. What you need for that is a list of projects, you know, money ready, shovel ready projects to fix. So I guess the question for you is, does, do you feel comfortable that the list that City Hall has for its infrastructure is in the shape it needs to be to fix the things that need to be fixed? As we just talked about, the the list is probably longer than there's money for at the moment. So how do you, I guess, the the drill down question, how do you decide what to fix?
Yeah, I mean, the list is definitely longer than there is um money to pay for it. Uh, and I was actually out with uh Congresswoman Jacobs yesterday, looking at some of the infrastructure in in the district um that we hope to to be able to utilize some of the federal infrastructure dollars for. I know that there's, I know that there's a list. I know that this, the the state of our roads and infrastructure is a huge priority uh to the mayor. Uh, the mayor and I were on the phone talking about those, uh, the roads that I I was um looking at with Congresswoman Jacobs literally immediately before that meeting. So I know it's a priority to him as well. Um, but Matt, the and and this is, you know, kind of gets to what Bella was asking about. We've got the list. There's the things that we know, you know, are slated for repair and should be upgraded. The new things that need to be done. And then as a result of of continuous generational underfunding, I think we we have to be honest that there's, things are going to continue to break um so long as we um as we, so long as we put off and or defer the maintenance that was supposed to be done and the upgrading that was supposed to be done. So don't mean to paint too gloomy a picture there, but it's, this isn't all getting done with the federal infrastructure dollars. I I I can't stress that enough. We're 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 going to have to do do more um to properly fund our water, our wastewater, um, our road repairs, our streetlights, our sidewalks, all of the things that every San Diegan should expect to to have in, you know, in in not just, you know, condition, but we literally call ourselves America's finest city. And it's really difficult to reckon that with a lot of what we see with respect to the most basic elements of city government. And and that um that that that's not getting fixed, all 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 fixed with the with the Biden infrastructure bill. Sadly, I wish it was. My job would be easy.
As council president, if you want to join my years-long campaign to retire America's finest city as a slogan, I'd be happy to welcome you onboard that train.
Yeah, well, we um I will tell you that very rarely do I, did I hear, and when I was working in the organizing advocacy world, and very rarely do I hear from my constituents who work in, who who live in in some of our more marginalized communities, do I hear them refer to San Diego as America's finest city unless it's in a kind of derisive and you gotta be kidding me sort of way.
I believe it.
All right, are we ready for the food round questions?
I was gonna ask if anyone has more questions.
I I want a question on that line, Sean. It's more of a D nine question than it is a council president question, but you and Monica were complaining recently that the police choppers tend to maybe linger in the lower income neighborhoods of San Diego longer than necessary. At least it seems that way. I've wanted to write about that. Police have not been cooperative at all in my request for any sort of data on that. Have you gotten anything from them? And I mean, is that an issue you you plan to pursue?
We have not asked for anything specifically on that, David. I know I lived in City Heights for five years and I know how often I saw the helicopter above the neighborhood and heard it. And I lived in Kansas City a year now, and I know how seldomly I see it over here. Um, so I haven't asked anything specifically there, but I I I will take a quick moment to say that I think that 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 this helicopter issue is um consistent with another issue that you all just wrote about um with respect to to stops and 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 um and violence um that occurs um when when stops occur. Um, and it is the hoops that low-income people and even more specifically um black and and uh Latino communities in particular have to do to prove what they see with their very eyes. And you noted in your, I I I read that that um that editorial, and you noted that there a report had come to council in an info item. Um, I believe it was June or July of the past year. And it wasn't good enough, right? It wasn't good enough that that the data was already being produced. It wasn't good enough that there were stories from community members of of folks having these negative interactions and and being being harmed. And we've got to do better as a system on that front. So if people in in neighborhoods in San Diego are telling us that the helicopter is consistently over their neighborhood and they don't understand why, if they are reporting that they seem to be having um physical altercations with city employees far more regularly than uh any of us should want, we really need to kind of wrestle with what sort of hoops we want them to jump through. And if we're asking, if we're placing a higher um burden of proof on them than we would on other uh members of society. And I think that for far too long, the answer to that has been yes, uh that those with uh with means, uh, those with with um the the means to to uh have the the legal support that they they need with those with access to people in power and in influence. Um, when they say something, people respond. When folks in less powerful communities say things, um, they're told, show us the data. And then when there's data, they say, well, let us produce our own data. And that is completely unjust and needs to change. So sorry for the, you know, bit of a um tangent there, but I think it speaks to a larger issue that we're we need to deal with.
Got it. And just that the gist of that is the thought is that they're staying in those neighborhoods longer because they feel like there's more potential crime there. Was if they go to a missing child in La Jolla, they're in and out because it's La Jolla. And if they're in Encanto, they decide to stay longer thinking something else might happen. Is that the guess of why they're there longer?
I I'm I'm not gonna.
Okay.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, and and David, I I just really quickly, I'm not gonna dismiss the fact that there are folks in in neighborhoods in my district who want to feel safe and sometimes do that feel more safe when they know they're going to get a quick police response. But that doesn't necessarily mean the helicopter hovering. It, I'll I'll just quickly add this, that my constituents and not hope, who we've spent a lot of time with over the past year, this is an incredibly marginalized community that's, you know, um surrounded by um freeways and a cemetery and has more violence in it than they would like, and more poverty in it than they would like, but are also super proud. Uh, they have to deal with um the the um gunshots echoing from the police firings range nearby. Um, and it's super traumatic to them. Um, and there's considerable frustration on that issue. And at the same time, they also want to know that when, if they need police officers, that they will respond in a timely fashion. These are not anti-police communities. They 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 are folks who just want to be treated with dignity and respect, you know, manner that's consistent with all residents in the city.
Got it. Thanks. Let me ask you quick, before Chris gets to his food question, which is coming. Um, but we're looking at later this week of of writing about the um the vaccination mandate for city employees, which we have been staunch supporters of even now with, you know, these uh stories that that some city, you know, the the notices to employees that you can be out of a job. You know, and in other cities, thi- this kind of, you know, stum and draw about having fewer employees all of a sudden show up for work has been overblown. There haven't been great numbers of employees who are are lose their jobs or haven't shown up. But I guess the question is, what is the plan B if there are a lot of employees? And this is more of a mayoral problem than you, but as council president, I think it's worth throwing your way. What what is the plan B? What should be the plan B for the city if we we're short workers in places where we need workers, city workers?
Yeah, I mean, so that was one of the questions that I think many of us asked was, you know, even if we were supportive of the of the mandate was, what is our plan B? We need to make sure we had one, right? And my understanding that is that um, the mayor has has worked uh closely with the chief to ensure that, um, you know, the the uh levels of staffing that are necessary in order to provide for the, you know, the safety of San Diegans will be provided. Uh, I, my, my understanding is that we've um made some headway actually in in um creating the conditions to recruit a more representative police force. And so I think that there is a pipeline of of younger um uh police officers who uh potential police officers um who could soon be at the ready. And and that uh it the the one of the other positives about that is that they, um, the folks in those classes uh look very representative of what San Diego looks like. And and, you know, that that could be a positive, you know, that could be a positive step as well. Um, I don't, I don't want people to lose their job. I I don't want them, I want, you know, like all of us are will benefit from uh continuity. Um, all of us will benefit when more people are vaccinated. So there's like a lot of reasons why I hope that they just, you know, do what is in the best interest of um of of the community um and 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 get those 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 vaccines. But um, yeah, I'm also confident ha- uh based on the conversations that I've had um with the mayor and his team that they are not overlooking the necessity of a plan B and will be ready to to institute one when the time, if and when the time comes.
Thanks.
All right, when was the last time you went to Super Cosina?
Oh, that's actually been a bit. Last time, I think I told you, I just, I just come from there. Um.
That's what the mayor said the last time I asked him too.
Yeah. It's been a little bit, Chris. It's actually reminding me that I need, that I that I'm overdue. Yeah.
You lived in South Korea for years. Uh, is there a Korean restaurant you like around here?
Yeah, so funny enough, there's a a new one just opened in the college area. So we've got a new District Nine um Korean restaurant. And they, there's a a robot that will will bring you your um, your 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 kimchi. Um, so that's right next to, there's a, there's a Tajima in that, in that little shopping center. And now there's a Korean spot as well.
Guy's Young on Engineer Road off Convoy, my nominee.
Oh, for Korean food. I will, Friends House is also very good. Um, so I I like that spot, but, you know, I gotta do the council member thing and pitch my D nine uh my my D nine restaurant, especially because it's new.
All right, that's all for me.
Well, I I appreciate your time, um, council president. Hope we can do this more as the year progresses. I wish you and the city good luck.
Thank you, Matt, uh, David, Laura, uh, Bella, Andrew and and Chris. Appreciate you all and I'm always happy to chat with you all. Uh, Matt, if I can really, really quick, sorry, I I was, I I told Chris I might, I might mention this. Um, one, I really appreciated you all running the the op-ed um yesterday around the the cyclist's um um wife who who, um, I think that was really important. There's, I don't know how letters to the editor, how it's decided and what's printed in there. There's been a number of times now where folks have written about public transportation, things that are just not accurate. Um, for example, someone who, you know, tested the system by riding multiple stops and ended up paying somewhere near like twenty dollars, they could have done it for two fifty, I think, because of the new pronto system. Um, and so
Actually, we've actually talked about with that with them, the the challenges um in getting the information out to these people. They, what they do, they actually do, I think. I think the question is, how do we convince them to not waste that money, to actually use the pronto system? So I, it's kind of a two-way street on that one.
Hundred percent. And I, you know, I'm on that MTS board and we were working hard on that front. It just, and I I don't doubt that that person actually did that. I I think the the important thing to note is that ride could have also been done for two dollars and fifty cents. We have a system now in place where, you know, a veteran, we could have a a a US veteran uh working near UTC, uh hop on the trolley, stop at the VA for medical treatment, and then, you know, ride at the border to see their family for two dollars and fifty cents. That is, you know, that is MTS's job to make that known to the public that that you can do that. Um, and but I think it's also, um, there's, there's folks who I'm not sure are that interested in actually understanding the system so much as they are of attacking the 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 system. Uh, and oftentimes, those seem to be some of the more vocal voices um with our news outlets outlets with respect to public transportation. So anyway, my little, that was my little bone to pick.
No, I'm glad you brought up, and I I would, I I mean, our, it's our job to make sure people do understand the system. So I'm glad that you brought that up. We 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 try to make sure that those letters are accurate. We also urge people, if they see something they disagree with, to write a letter. So if you or someone else with MTS or someone else in the community wants to write a letter that says that that, you know, um rebut the points that made by the one person who said they went all over town for X amount of money, we would print that as well.
Yeah, thanks, y'all.
I know you've got a lot more stuff to do than write letters to the editor, of course.
Yeah, well, yeah, thanks for letting me gripe uh for for a minute. Thought I, I thought I'd take a turn at it.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Thanks, y'all.
Take care.
Bye.
Thank you.